So, we're live already, so good evening. Welcome to the April 14th meeting of the Northampton Planning Board. There's no one here, so we can assume there's no public comment. The first thing on our agenda is the Bicycle Ped Plan.
Wayne's not here yet, so we'll reorder things, sorry.
Do you want to cover the minutes? Cover the minutes.
Oh, yeah.
John moved for approval of the minutes.
Ann second in it. All in favor?
Unanimous.
I have a bunch of A and Rs, and then I can do the FFR changes and URA stuff, but...
Fields, Forests, and Rivers, what is FFR?
I'll show you. So, we had this conversation about, I have some maps, yay, about changing, doing the map changes for URA and looking at sort of pushing those districts to either B or maybe downzoning to suburban residential, in some cases keeping them or waiting.
So, was that discussion, so they weren't like so, like...
It was like big clump and then scattered.
Right, yeah, right, okay.
So, we, as part of that conversation, there were also parcels that made sense to, that were parks that should go to Farms, Forests, and Rivers, which, right now, the zone is used primarily for city open space parcels, the ones that the city owns, not any of the ones that have conservation restrictions or anything, but they're city-owned parcels. So, what we've done, this map, this is just sort of an update because we're not quite ready to submit the URA piece, but we can move forward with Farms, Forests, and Rivers piece, which I think strategically you all wanted to do first to show how the relationship sort of highlights the boundaries of urban residential A and how maybe they make even less sense when you throw the FFR or Parks in.
Just to clarify perhaps what is obvious to everyone else, so Farms, Field, and...
Forests and...
Forests, Field, and Rivers.
Right.
But Parks is part of that.
Well, so, up until, not until this change, so what's in front of you, so then I also have a quick, I don't have enough copies for everyone, so you guys can maybe share a couple of copies of the text change that would go along with it. So, we were concerned, so currently Farms, Forests, and Rivers only city-protected open space, not...
All one?
Yeah, that's one. That's another copy. Not Parks or schools or anything else that really won't be developed, but it's still zoned as though it could be developed. So, for instance, Child's Park was an example of a park that is also, is zoned urban residential A, so if you just look at the map, you say, wow, I've got this big parcel here, it's URA, but in fact, it's a park, so, and it, and for all intents and purposes, it's deeded as a park and it won't be changed for development purposes. I have, somehow, I got not quite enough copies of these, but, so, the other piece of it...
It'd be easy, and I'll share with them.
The other piece of that is that, as part of this Farms, Forests, and Rivers, which is intended, Farms, Forests, and Rivers originally was dedicated to, or allocated for parcels where we thought we could use a transfer of development rights.
Is that a zoning district?
Yes. So...
Used for what?
Used as a, as a receiving zone, I'm sorry, I did that backwards, in relation to transfer of development rights, where we would allocate a place to be Farms, Forests, and Rivers, and we would transfer the development rights off that parcel to an in-town location so that that would help cover, you know, offset the property owner's investment by allowing those development rights to go elsewhere in the city. We never really, that never really took off. It's a, transfer of development rights is really complicated, so we're sort of reorganizing what Farms, Forests, and Rivers is, knowing that these are special pieces of property that we want to permanently protect. So, we've started with just city-owned property, and maybe at some later time, we'd look at different parcels. But this exercise is, shows in yellow, in green, the existing Farms, Forests, and Rivers properties, which are owned by the city, mostly held by the Conservation Commission. The blue is either Water or Special Conservancy District, so Flood Plain, so that's why the whole meadow section is blue. It's not that it's, well, the river is there sometimes when it floods, but not most of the time. And then the yellow represents parcels that have either, that we're proposing to transfer into Farms, Forests, and Rivers, either because they've been purchased as open space since the last time we made a Farms, Forests, and Rivers map change, or they fall into the category of other city-owned properties that won't be developed, but we want to take them out of, we want to just show more truthfully that they're not intended to be developed because we'll take them out of a URA or URB zone, knowing...
This is Parks.
Parks and school properties and things like, and Fields, so Recreation Fields.
So, Child's Park in the middle, right in URA, the big yellow triangle, would be green in the...
Even though it's not city-owned, it's a park, forever going to stay a park.
Farm, Forests, and Rivers is what relationship to Park?
It's permanently protected open space.
But, is a park part of Farm, Forests, or River?
It is now. I mean, Parks can, Park, Park means different things to different people. We, originally, it was a designation for areas that were completely pristine and undeveloped, and which we wanted to protect. And so, we've expanded the types of land that would fall under that category, but we've only done that with city-owned parcels. So, it used to be there were only, I think, one or two parcels in the city that were zoned that way, as, again, as sending zones for development rights. And a few years ago, maybe eight years ago, we started the process of putting, remapping all the conservation land that was owned by the city to Farms, Forests, and Rivers, just to show that it wasn't up for development anymore, because even though we purchased the properties, they were still zoned in whatever district they were located.
Did you ever do any of the sending swaps?
No, and the first, the one we thought where it would happen would be around the state hospital, and then we just, there was so much development at the state hospital anyway, once the plans got approved, I mean, this goes way back to before we had a plan for the state hospital.
I assume the red is what you want to change it to?
Right, so the text in front of you would go along with the maps, because if you recall the conversation, we wanted to, we were looking at Look Park and changing that out of URA, because that's never going to be developed for residential, so put that into FFR, but there are other activities that happen at Look Park and some of these other non-city-owned open spaces or parks that we want to make sure we're not excluding from allowed uses, and so the red text identifies...
So, that's why you have the provision that it could be a nonprofit as well as government-owned?
Right, right. And that you could have banquet halls or entertainment venues like what happens at Look Park. And then we also added, which we haven't had before, is a caretaker's residence opportunity at any one of these sites. So, I think actually there used to be someone at Look Park that would, you know, the director would, would live on site, and then there might, that might come up in other, on other occasions too, you know, at the boathouse. Oh, it's okay, it just allows it to happen, and it's still, it's not a violation of the zoning to have one residence on site, because typically, these are not residential properties, so...
I'm a little cautious about the caretaker living there. I'm on my yard, am I a caretaker? You know, can I, could I pull that, is there any way for me to get a piece of this property and build on it and say I'm a caretaker?
What property?
These that we're talking about?
Well, no, because they're owned, they're already, yeah. So, these aren't, this isn't, the map change isn't going to, doesn't include private ownership, other than these nonprofits that own the...
What about...
Wait, so a nonprofit, you're assuming will never change hands? The land of a nonprofit will never change hands?
No, but if it's permanent, if it's restricted by deed to be that thing, Child's Park or Recreation Field, so we've, we have Recreation Fields that have been acquired and taken act of the legislature to convert out, so...
I know it's an unusual case, but I mean, I just could see over the future that a piece of a nonprofit turns this over and somebody reads this in and says, well, a caretaker's house can go on this property, I'll be a caretaker.
I think that, you know, then you'd have to show that your, your function there is to oversee the premises and make sure you're taking care of it as opposed to just living there.
It would still have to be open space with limitations on what you could do with it.
Right, right.
But it might be a really nice house. And residential, location, location, location.
So, Child's Park's the only one that's a nonprofit now, because Look Park's owned by the city.
No, the land is owned by the city, but it's run by trustees.
And it has a caretaker house on it, but doesn't, I don't think anybody lives there.
Not anymore.
But Child's Park, I mean, the idea is to be restricted, so one, even if someone snuck in and did a caretaker home, it's still less than if it was developed as URB or URAS or URA.
I guess the other...
And you couldn't chop it up into multiple lots, still, it would be one residence on the entire park.
I guess I can have a little bit, and I know, you know, again, this could, you know, would have to change hands, whatever, but I guess I would be concerned, just because we've had, you know, some organizations come before, like civic groups and stuff, where they're doing things and neighbors aren't thrilled about it. I mean, could a nonprofit, could it change hands and then, you know, say you like Child's Park, and I know this is not, probably not a great example, it doesn't have a banquet hall or an entertainment venue or a concession stand, but what if it changed hands, could it have all those things, and all of a sudden, now you've got neighbors all around saying, hey, wait a minute, you're running, you know, an entertainment business, or, you know, I mean, I guess that's a...
Well, they do have, they do have events there, they have weddings, so...
But they don't have a concession stand or an entertainment, you know, I guess that's the thing, could it change hands and then it, and then it becomes like another Look Park or something like that? I guess that's the...
Or if they're like the, you know, like the Laney House type thing, built a, you know, a banquet hall facility in the middle of Child's Park, and they had functions every weekend and a adjoining, you know, conference space, or whatever it is, and just, just to take the worst example, is that, is that allowed? It is technically possible, but isn't, I guess, to me, maybe that's a better solution than it being divided up into 20 homes. No argument, but how...
But the neighbors might say, there's only one solution, which is keeping it...
Right, if there's only, we can't do that, so our choice is really keeping it the same or making it an open space use. And there's other mechanisms, and I don't know anything about the will of, you know, whoever did it, maybe it can be converted anyway, but...
What is a community facility?
That's defined in the city ordinance as, as uses like, you know, recreation center or, like, the senior center is a community facility.
So, it's a defined...
Is it ordered in Florence? Would that be a...
Yes.
Okay. So, what if that was in Child's Park?
I don't know.
Or in your soccer arena, in the middle of Child's Park?
Do you think that this permits the Child's Park people to build this stuff in Child's Park?
Well, the caretaker residence, I think if they were going to do a banquet hall or concession stand, they'd probably have to construct a building for that, because the only building there is that small, I mean, they're pretty small, so to really become a banquet hall, they would have to build, so anything over 2,000 square feet still comes before the planning board for site plan approval. But yes, it would allow them to come before the board for that.
But if they want to, so the Garden House at Look Park is, do we classify that? Community center?
Yeah.
Whatever that's classified as is allowed already on the site, because we allow that in all districts, right? We allow that in all districts?
Um...
Because the Garden House has it, and that's what the old Florence Grammar School is, those are the two that we have of that type.
Right.
So, I think they could do that anyway. I mean, instead of a site plan for anything over 2,000 feet, could you do a special permit? So that if, again, somebody in the middle of Child's Park, in the middle of the biggest open field, want to build a giant indoor soccer, tennis, swimming arena and call it a community center, but it's a for-profit and traffic is up and the neighbors hate it and all that stuff, right now, does this prevent that from happening, or is that...
Well, it's allowed by right, so if you think that makes sense for new facilities, new venues, I mean, you could require a special permit for that.
But you'd have to, somehow or another, they'd have to be able to, to build within whatever restrictions you, you couldn't, special permit it right out of existence, could you?
Sure, if, if for a certain location it didn't make sense, or they couldn't address impacts to the neighborhood in some way, then you could say, no, this is not the right place for an indoor soccer arena.
I mean, I don't expect any of this to happen, certainly, it's better, the way it's proposed, than to chop it up into different lots, I'm just trying to think of the worst-case scenario.
And I want to confirm that Child's Park is the only non-city-owned yellow area we're looking at?
Yes, so Look Park's a little weird, the main part of Look Park is owned by the city, that's the part that's given by Fannie Look and managed by the Self-Prestigating Trust. The land on the other side of the roundabout, that goes up to the bike path, that the trustees actually bought, so that's owned by Look Park trustees and not by the city, so that's the only other exception in that piece.
Okay. So, the first step that, so this is really just work in progress, we haven't had, had a chance to do a ton of this, but we sort of decided to do the Farms, Forests, and Rivers first, and then tackle the URA maps. I am still working on trying to get the data about the lot size and unit counts in neighborhoods for each of those URA areas that you thought were appropriate to convert to other zoning districts, so that will come as sort of the second piece.
So, those are all the red outlines?
Right.
So, the change, the wording change here is for the yellow areas that would join the green areas, basically.
Right, right.
The yellow areas are going to turn green, as it were.
Right.
That's correct.
So, it would be, the change would address, would be, apply to the green and the yellow.
Can you just, maybe in the biggest one too, we've got Child's Park, what are the other big yellow areas?
So, this, let's start on the southern part along Route 10, is an area that we, when did that close, Wayne? That's a...
Yeah, a few, a couple months ago.
Okay, so, new, that's a new acquisition for the city in partnership with Arcadia.
So, we've been doing this every couple of years, is as we buy land for conservation, we've been rezoning those to Farms, Forests, and Rivers, so that's been sort of routine. So, that, that one in the upper right, I'm not trying to steal Carolyn's thunder, we see all that yellow, those are similar, those are all parcels we've purchased recently.
Those look like they were all farm field kinds of things, given their shape.
When the city, I don't know the history well enough of the city, but I gather when the city was first settled, you might own a house downtown and a wood lot up here.
Yeah, I think it was required, wasn't it?
I think so.
Ah, interesting.
Where are those off of, in the upper right? I'm just having a...
Coles Meadow Road and North Front Street.
And back, this backland, you can see...
Just way back in there, yeah.
Yeah. And then, then the other big one is Look Park. Oh, that one's, that one's Child's Park.
This little one, oh, that is Child's, okay. It's okay.
I'm sorry that I missed, I told Deb and Son this wrong, although maybe we don't want to get this wrong. There is a conservation restriction on this, on this map that's owned by Lethrop Community, the back part of Lethrop.
Uh-huh.
And I can't remember who else, we were supposed to, that or not, but that's nonprofit, obviously.
And so, then there's Look Park, and then the other parcels are sort of on the western end of the city are parcels that were, again, purchased over the last couple of years.
It's rural, per, rural pieces?
Right, backland, that didn't have any frontage, that were...
So, really, the only one that we're kind of worried about here, it sounds like, is Child's Park.
Well, Child's Park, yeah, yeah, pretty much, because, you know, we've got a recreation field, our main field is shown up on here off of Bridge Road, but, you know, that's an Article 97 property anyway, so that's never going to...
And I think, as I understand, Child's Park, there's some huge restrictions that just the board can, I mean, they can barely do anything up there, and I understand it from deed or from the will of whoever gave the...
I think that's right, unless they went to probate, and I have no idea how, I don't, this isn't my area, I have no idea if going to probate is really hard or easy, but it has to go to probate to change, to probate court to change it.
Wayne, what's the little green triangle to the southeast of Child's Park?
And so, is any of this...
Little tiny green...
That's actually a tiny conservation area, Mary Brown's Dingle.
What is it?
Brown's Dingle is a tiny conservation area. It's important only because of all the flooding we have on State Street, that holds back some of the water, so it's off of the homes on Soyet Street, and then on the other side, Creston Street, it's like a tiny little piece in between. It has a tiny...
The front on Glendale Road, it was called?
No, it's the dump.
Yeah, it is another road that gives the Glenn, it's off of Prospect, anything else is only people's backyard, actually, certainly.
Carolyn, is this yellow piece out Route 9, is that the Smith-Vogue property? That long, narrow?
No.
It's the old Girl Scout property.
Oh, that's the Girl Scout?
Which we bought.
Right, okay.
The Smith-Vogue property is just south of that, it's not, because, I don't know how that came in, the one, yellow one is the Girl Scout property.
Is that up where you live or something?
Yes, actually, my yard, yeah, like, next to it, that little tiny corner.
So, the only one that's bothered by the idea of a category Farms, Forests, and Rivers for parcels that are neither Farms nor Forests and Rivers?
No, you're not.
It seems crazy.
But it's the restriction, not so much the title, it's how, what you can or can't do on the property.
Yeah, well, maybe we should change it, maybe it should be Farms, Forests, Rivers, and Recreation, because the idea is...
Or Park, or whatever.
Right, because that's smart of them, it's so confusing and misleading. Right. You're right, that might be a good idea, because part of the motivation is the, is the reverse, is that if you look at the city, you think, oh, there's all this land that could be developed, and it really can't be, so, but you're right, maybe it should be Farms, Forests, Rivers, and Parks, doesn't quite roll off the tongue the same way.
You missed it when we looked at FFR and not one of us knew what it meant.
We could all get two out of her.
All right, so you want us to look at the name?
Well, and you know what, you could take Forest out of there, farming, you could, you farm trees, I mean, if you're looking for another three-letter acronym, take the Forest out and call it...
FRP?
Or something like that. Polaski Park, is that going to confuse things, and we have other parks that might not fall into this?
Yes. And that's going to be under Article 97, too.
The original vision for the zoning district was to also zone some land that we really think it should always be protected, but that's a big deal, to take someone's private property and rezonate, so we haven't gone there, we may or may not do that someday in the future, at this point, it's really just to reflect land that's already protected.
draconian comes to mind.
But that's interesting, I mean, maybe we should put Polaski Park under there, so it's not zoned central business.
Yeah, it seems like you would.
We definitely have to add Park to the name.
Well, you're not, you're not, I mean, we've spent so much CPA money on it, it's not, I mean, it can't go...
Right, but the whole idea is to say, well, why is it zoned in a business as a business zone?
Why is it space?
If it's never, ever going to be.
Right.
So, Polaski Park, just making this scenario up, could somebody come in, private owner, put in a giant concession stand, and then, you know, lease it to the city, or have some arrangements where it's privately owned and for-profit, but it, it meets the criteria of a community center, a concession stand or something, but it's not what anyone wants downtown after all this effort is being done? How would you avoid a scenario like that? Or do we need to avoid a scenario like that?
So, whatever that is, is going to be allowed under any zoning, we allow municipal uses anywhere, so if the city wanted to do a hot dog stand, whether, you know, like Look Park's concession thing, whatever the zoning district is, it would be allowed, so the zoning would sort of be irrelevant.
Okay.
As Devin said, this property was protected with CPA, because of CPA, so it would take a lot of steps, it was considered a conversion, it would be almost impossible, if it was considered not a conversion of a parkland, it would be possible with a vote from City Council and this, and Parks Commission.
But also, I mean, inevitably, the park, there'll be concessionaires at some point on the, in the park, you know, if there's an event, someone's going to set up a table and sell stuff.
Setting up a table to sell brownies is, I'm just...
An income stream for the senior center is more like what we might be worried about.
Yeah, I'm just worried about not protecting the areas that we're trying to protect from, from development that we don't want to see.
Yeah, I mean, I think in that case, it's a city-owned parcel, and given the comment that went into the design of the park, my guess is that anything that would change would generate lots of public comment to City Council, to the mayor's office, so it would be vetted that way, as opposed to needing a planning board permit, it's really more about a decision, a community decision about how we should lease out our property.
Well, I mean, I, I think when you're thinking about making zoning changes, it's these kind of what-if questions that we're supposed to ask, you know, what, what would happen if so, you know, that's, our job is to try to look around the corner and say, you know, what, it, it's easy to get the intended use, it's the unintended outcome we're trying to capture.
Everything you said, Carolyn, right there, I agree with 100%, but that, to me, is a special permit conversation, you know, is this the right use for this parcel and so forth, and if you could, so is the community supposed to vet a proposed development at Child's Park or Look Park or Polaski Park and all these, or Mary's something Dingle or whatever, so...
So, Child's Park's in a separate world because it's nonprofit, all the rest, the zoning really would make no difference, because it would all be allowed now. I think as a practical matter, if you asked for zoning, which would be much more restrictive for those things, I don't think it would be approved, I mean, if it went to Mayor or the Look Park Board, they would strongly oppose if they couldn't do a concession stand.
Right.
So, to some extent, the zoning's neutral about it, the better doesn't make it worse. Your discussion on Child's Park's interesting, because that's not cities, it doesn't have some of those exemptions.
So, but, but converting Child's Park to a park, which makes sense, we're certainly not making it any worse than it is now, I'm just wondering, at the same time, I just don't want to open a door for some unintended consequence.
Well, I think your, your solution before the special permit is legitimate, whether it's for all uses or for non-municipal uses, I guess it's the other discussion, if we're really mostly felt worried with that one.
Yeah, I mean, I, just looking at the language, you know, municipal or community facility, recreation and conservation facilities, those can mean a lot of different things, and so, and a developer could stretch the meaning of, of, you know, a community facility, for example, and so how would you prevent, just staying then on Child's Park, would you just say, you know, over 2,000 square feet, instead of... Would you just say, you know, over 2,000 square feet instead of site plan requires special permit?
Well, you could.
Instruction or something.
You could break this into two, so you could have one bullet, municipal or community facility, recreation, conservation facilities owned by a government and all ancillary uses is by right. And then under special permit, you could have, you know, community facilities, recreation, conservation facilities owned by a nonprofit and ancillary uses are special permit?
That's good by me.
Yeah.
Three summers, I painted all those white rocks when you walk around Child's Park.
You did?
Did they pay you or is that graffiti?
Three summers, what, are you crazy?
And I was.
Did you ever ask why?
I could see one summer.
There are a lot less, we call them the bullets, there are a lot less there now than there used to be. They used to be, they used to line, you know, all the driveways, but they were a pain to weed around or mow around, whatever, so over the years, they took them out. But it was myself and then the next youngest person, I think, was 76. And I was 16 and the next guy.
It's a great story.
Took you that long to get around all of them?
Little chunks and then we did little chunks the next year. We did nothing fast at Child's Park because everybody was like 70.
You were the only child.
Yeah.
So I feel like every time this comes back before, we have to almost start over and agree. We've got a really busy May and, you know, it'll be a couple of months before we see this again. But I think we're at, in agreement with what to do with the yellow now by dividing it into municipal and special permit for nonprofits. So remind us of that when we get it back again.
Okay.
We've already talked about this.
Yes.
I mean, otherwise, it makes sense, all the yellow goes green.
Yeah.
And then diagrammatically, when you look at the map, as far as developable land you can develop, you can see.
Is there any, is there any question that we wanna put before Carolyn to think about the URA and URB changes? I mean, I think.
You guys already closed that door, too.
Been there, done that.
All right.
Do you wanna do the bicycle ped plan?
Defer to Wayne's schedule for tonight? I was doing six A and Rs and making you eight.
We just have three.
Poor Anne's heard this already. I'm gonna take one and pass it along. Do I have copies now?
Yeah.
So I, I think I briefed you on this before, so very quickly, when we did the sustainable, when we did the Star Communities Assessment of Sustainable North Hampton, when we started thinking about revising the plan for next time around, we identified two big weaknesses. The section on bike head isn't as strong as it could be and the section on climate adaptation isn't as strong as it could be. So our focus has really been working on those two sections, so we get back to the comp plan, we'll just work on it. We received four separate grants to let us do this walk bike in comprehensive plan. And so we hired Alta for the majority of it and Pioneer Right Planning Commission for part of it. It includes a few different phases, includes sort of looking at the streets policy that you endorsed and City Council adopted, looking at subdivision regs, looking generally at trying to think about what the future of Main Street should be. You know, could we drop a lane, how would that work programmatically? And then looking citywide and making sort of general recommendations like what should crosswalk, what should sidewalk? And then specifically what projects are really important to be done out there. So they're moving forward, we have the first forum, you know, somebody who had, a month ago, more or less. We have two forums coming up. So there's two things, unfortunately, the same color, so they look the same. But the first page is, we have a forum on May 10th in this room, which we hope we're not gonna have too many people since it's smaller, that's just focused on Main Street. So we had Nelson Nygaard five years ago look at Main Street and say, we could make it work if we dropped a lane. Alta's the next phase and their job is to say, okay, how do we wanna use that real estate? If we freed up, say, 15, if we had one lane directly dropped but had turnpockets, so it, so it, you know, cars moved clearly, how would we use the extra 15 feet? Because you can imagine, we need wider sidewalks in places, we want more street trees, we want bike lanes, we want center islands, we want more parking, we want all these things that are really exciting and add up to a lot more than 15 feet. So Alta's supposed to help us with the programmatic piece and then in October and November this year, we're hiring an engineer to actually start redesigning all of Main Street. We wanna do the programmatic piece first. So that forum's May 10th, we'd love you all to come. May 18th at First Churches in the sanctuary there is the second public forum in the whole process. So their, Alta will come back and say, here's what we heard, here's what we're thinking, what do you think? Get additional comment on that process. We have two things that are online right now, Wiki Maps, you wanna know what Wikipedia is, you know, sort of a crowdsourced encyclopedia? This is in essence a Wiki map, it's a crowdsourced map. So we have a map of the city, you could say, I walk here, it's safer, it's lousy, I bicycle here, it's safer, it's lousy. And then we have a public comments on the website as well, you can add your comment, you can comment on other people's comments. So that's what the May 18th thing is. And then the next five pages is really, it's back-to-back, is really sort of their initial recommendations for bike network improvements, pedestrian network improvements, citywide, there's a zoom in for Florence, then for downtown. This went to the Bike Ped Committee on Tuesday, which Anne represents you all on. So there's a lot of comments from Bike Ped, it's not reflected on here yet.
Yeah.
Yeah, I do use it from sitting. So this is sort of, if you have off-the-cuff comments, by all means, make them now, but if you have time, sort of when you go home and think about it and say, this place, you know, think about both in your personal hat, where you travel feels unsafe, either by school and foot, and then in your hat here of where do you issue a permit to something which highlights something.
Question, is there any tie between this and Nelson Nygaard or whatever the name was from four or five years ago?
Yeah, so two big ties to it. One is, they're taking as a given that it's technically possible to drop a lane through downtown, whether it's desirable or not, it's a separate thing, but it's technically possible. And the second just generally is Nelson Nygaard informed this, so it's one of the things that they read as their, their homework assignment and reflect on it. Likewise, we just did a Main Street or Mass DOT paid for, a project done by Tool Design who's like the main competitor result, another really good firm, to do an assessment just of Main Street. You know, where are the safety issues, what are the opportunities? And so they're reading that as part of their process.
Okay.
So if it's useful though, page by page, we can do that, but we don't have to, I'm fine if you just wanna email later, so whatever's your, your pleasure.
Can you, like, take downtown North Hampton?
Yeah.
Are there, are there, are there general things that they, that came up as part of this review that they ended up targeting more often than not? You know?
Right.
Improved sidewalk, they add bump outs, turnarounds, whatever it might be?
Yeah, you just got the main parts. Certainly add bump outs to make it easier to cross streets, to narrow the streets. Main Street, at this point, they're sort of skipping because it's gonna have a bigger effort.
Yep.
And they've been looking at a lot of options for Main Street, from bump outs to wider curbs to, they really like pedestrian, middle islands, not necessarily the whole place, but maybe like where a crosswalk is. So I, think about Main Street, we don't have a continuous island, but we have a couple of islands where crosswalks go, particularly right around here. So those and bump outs are the main ones, sidewalks wherever there's gaps in the sidewalks, the State Street, for example. It's the only, as far as I know, it's the only street downtown that has sidewalks only on one side of the street. So looking at that. But the rest are really sort of opportunities, so you know, King, there's no surprise, but King Street, when it was redone 30 years ago, didn't have a single pedestrian phase, was very pedestrian friendly. We've retrofitted some over the years, but they're obviously making a lot of recommendations about that piece. They always are interested, and there's not that many of these, but places where a very short distance makes a big difference. So like Child's Park by the high school, there's a wonderful path.
I'm looking at that, where, where is that specifically?
So this sort of loop that goes around Child's Park, but right at the intersection of Woodlawn and Elm, there's like a gutter, like I bicycle through that sometimes. And you're on this wide, 10-foot wide trail and suddenly it narrows down to two feet, that's probably for drainage and not for pedestrians. They're saying, you know, make that a path there. There's a couple places where we have turn lanes that aren't necessarily needed, so they're looking at the state hospital, for example, where the West Street was designed when we thought the south side would be a village with lots of uses at different times. Instead, we have a single user who actually has less traffic. So we decide to need the turn lane, they're not focusing on turn lane per se, but as much as the turning radius there. And I guess the other one generally is, thinking about getting on and off the bike path. So we're hoping to do this project on Pleasant Street, which might include cycle tracks and bike lanes, but when you get up to Holyoke Street, there's just not enough real estate. The only way to put a bike lane is to drop parked cars. And the reality is, we need the parked cars to keep, you know, the retail law.
There's enough room on Pleasant Street to do that, to have a?
South of Holyoke. From Holyoke to downtown, there's not enough room unless we drop parked cars and I said I would personally be opposed to that. So they're actually looking at the opportunity of, could we do what's called a bicycle boulevard, but slow down the speed of traffic on Holly Street and Market Street and maybe State Street, or maybe North Street? So that you could say, okay, we don't have room for bike lanes, we go in one block and we can make the road safer just by slowing down the speed of traffic.
So you're talking about making Market or Holly Street even skinnier?
Not necessarily skinnier, it's often about slowing the speed of traffic. So thinking about, you know, Market Street has either one or two speed humps, you know, think about speed humps to keep the traffic there, but no, not, not physically narrowing the street.
I, I think it's interesting and I, there's been so much talk about Main Street and the possibilities about Main Street, but there just seem to be a lot of different, not necessarily joined consensus about which possibilities are the ones that should be pursued on Main Street.
I honestly feel like if money were no object, that we know exactly what to do with Main Street. It wouldn't feel good to everyone who's lived with Main Street the way it's been for decades. But I think there's, there's tremendous improvement that can be done there. But it involves infrastructure and drainage and trees and.
And that's why this is the start, I mean, we may be looking at some low-hanging fruit like closing Cracker Barrel Alley over here, but most of this is to set up for this $7 million reconstruction project that's gonna take 10 years to happen, the all-state money, but it gets us down that path.
One thing that has happened, though, is now there's federal policy for complete streets, so the states are gonna be judged about whether all their projects are following that, so that's a little push in the right direction.
It was interesting, Phil Goff, who's the consultant from Alta, and I met with the new North Hampton DNA, downtown, North Hampton Association. And I was only able to be for the first half of the meeting, but I sort of would've thought there'd be more pushback because merchants are always worried about change, you know, in a strict environment. And they were, they were excited about the idea of, you know, how does it make it safer? Because people, I mean, obviously, a lot of people cross the street, but it's, it's a resistance, you know, it's a little bit harder to cross the street than go along the street, so.
So your real point tonight is to explain to us what is going on with this and to get our attention on the meetings.
Yeah, well, on the meetings, but, but you get your own, I mean, if you send an email, I mean, I love you to come to the meetings, but if you send an email about these things, it will get the same weight as if you shut up the meeting instead of, so whatever, whatever format works you. Meetings are fun because you hear what everybody else says and you will ultimately be approving this plan as part of the comp plan, so I want you to feel part in that process.
I'm, I'm actually running my own pedestrian safety meeting, you see, on the tent. But my pet peeve is State Street because that's the way you get to the bike path if you're in a dense area down here and I find that to be a very unpleasant travel.
They're very aware of that. And a lot of comment was made by people about getting, you know.
One of the things that he, from, one of the things he threw out as sort of a test is, would we be interested in Center Street being one, in State Street being one way? He asked me upfront, was it okay to say? And I said, well, I'm personally resistant, I've been proven it to me, but it's fine to test it. We also talked about, could you just use Gothic Street as another bike boulevard? You know, so come up State Street from the bike path up to, is that Bright that cuts over to Gothic?
Yeah.
You know, come up State Street up to Bright and then Bright to Gothic and then take the same thing, not narrowing it, but making it slow enough that, you know.
I'd be interested in talking about a bike boulevard there because that's what's happening, people are riding on the sidewalk because they're scared of the traffic.
Yeah, yeah. And, you know, but I saw one of these in Albuquerque recently, a bike boulevard, and their sign was speed limit 18 miles an hour, which I think was just to catch your attention. But part of the reason that 18 miles or 20 miles an hour is magical is that whole thing of, if you get hit by a car above 25, you're probably gonna die. If you get hit below 20, it's not a nice experience, but you're probably gonna live.
Those numbers don't work when you're our age.
Yeah, I know. One miles an hour.
There's a lot on those maps, so you should really look at them and put the pieces together and the insert, particularly the Florence insert, there's a lot of ideas in there that's, I think that's very useful. There are, there were a lot, at the last meeting, there were a lot of additions, too, so it would be even more complicated the next time you would look at it.
Are people using your Wiki Maps?
100 people so far have responded. I haven't looked, so I don't know what the comments have been, if they're all the same thing, but yeah.
But they, but they got comments from other sources than that, from the meetings and everything else as well.
Any exposure numbers? Hopeful to come anytime? I mean, like, you know, we're not just anecdotally said, oh, the bicyclist ride on the sidewalk on State Street. Any, will any of this generate some, you know, metrics of exposure?
We don't have, they're, they're not doing a formal accounting program as part of this. The same grant that's paying for this is letting us buy two permanent counting stations on the bike path. They're not gonna be installed in time for this, but one's gonna be on, basically the bike path bridge in Main Street and one location be determined in Florence. So we're gonna count bikes and ped, which direction they're going and what kind of, you know, whether they're bikes or a ped. So that's sort of part of the process.
I was part of something that was doing that.
Right, so not part of this, but so.
But some of those datas are gonna, yeah.
So as part of this grant, again, that's paying for it, we got PVPC sort of help plan these counts and did one of them, I forgot which station you had. So we have individual counts, it was basically on the Pleasant Street project, the Mass Works, so we did Pleasant Street, Holly Street, one count on Main Street, which interesting was about 20 times the traffic of Pleasant and 20 times the traffic of anything in Springfield. I bet 20 times the ped traffic. So we're these individual places. One of the reasons we're doing these things on the bike path is, you know, we had, Mass DOT has some permanent counting stations and Mass DOT and PVPC in the city do individual counts around the city. So we have some pretty good sense of traffic counts. And even just personally, I can go out to a street and I have done this long enough, I could give a sense of how many cars per day there are. I have no idea what the equivalent is for pedestrians or for, for bike path. So we're just trying to have some basic counts so we can start comparing.
Your vehicle traffic, do they break out trucks through downtown?
When they do count, the last one was like six years ago, seven years ago.
I'd love to see those two compared. Even in my short time here, it has increased a lot. I can't, I can't, I don't know whether they're avoiding the circle at Look Park, I can't figure out why they wanna come through town.
Yeah, interesting. Must be bad for us because the intersection, the improvement of Route 10, 66 and 9, we're looking at tightening up the intersections, but that would make it harder for trucks and that only is gonna be allowed by Mass DOT if we're below a certain percentage of truck traffic, so.
There's not a light that I'm in, you know, a stoplight downtown at the main intersection that I don't see a truck goes through.
Interesting, okay.
Away from DOT.
I applaud who you've got doing the work.
Yeah, this is interesting.
They're really, they're really good. Between Nelson Nygaard and Alta and Tool, that's, that's just as good as it gets.
So I have three A and Rs, there's just one on the agenda, the other two snuck in before the meeting.
Wait, there's only one on the agenda?
Yeah.
There's only one on the agenda? What, it means snuck in, right?
Well, I couldn't have anticipated.
John really wants to go here.
Not really, I know.
Okay, I'll be quick. Since this one's.
Posted for us to consider them, do you?
No, because we couldn't reasonably have known that this would have come before the meeting.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Especially when they come in at 4 o'clock in the afternoon on Thursday. So, this is this Polish church, St. Valentine's, on King Street. It is at the corner of King and Edward Square, so it goes back into Edward Square, it's that little square street, actually. So the church wants to carve off the parcel, the, there's a rectory behind the, I think that's what you call it, behind the church, and they're carving it off into its own lot, because they're gonna sell it as a separate thing. So King Street is here, and across the street is what, Dunkin' Donuts, or pretty close to that?
No, that's not quite that far, I think Dunkin' Donuts...
Yeah, you're right. It's like near the seal.
And the other church is like two lots down.
Not conscious of that at all.
So there's no, it's central business, there's no minimum lot size or anything, I mean, there's not gonna be anything new here, because it's just dividing two buildings onto their own lots.
Still central business? I thought central business stopped at, like, Trumbull Road.
No, so it got rezoned.
I thought that was like transitional, or whatever we called it.
Entrance business starts right at the intersection of North Street, so it goes up to North Street, right there. Any problems?
When we dealt with the changes to the church on this side?
This side?
This side, yeah.
Oh, wait, King Street, yeah, this side, you're right.
These, these were...
Yeah, I thought the parking lot was half central business, half...
Right at the time, but the zoning came after that.
Okay, okay.
Any issues? Okay.
So moved.
Second? Ann seconded, all in favor?
Okay. The next one is, the next two you've already seen in permits, so it's really just the actual A and R to create what you all approved of the permit. So this was, this Pat Melnick came in for, to carve off that lot here, that large lot on Chesterfield Road, so this is the A and R that creates the lots, or the flag lot anyway, plus the new lot that we wanted to create.
So we're approving, and something that's approval not required, something that we've already approved.
Okay.
Would you like to make that motion?
Sounds like a safe bet.
Yeah.
I'd like to review.
Mark made the motion, and John seconded, and all in favor?
Okay. The third one, I left the plans upstairs.
Just trust me, I'll take your word.
It's right here.
Can you draw us a picture on the chalkboard?
Yeah.
I could, but it wouldn't be accurate, because it's not surveyed. This is the one that you just reviewed, it's the corner of Hatfield and Bridge Road, so the four, it was gonna be two singles and two families.
Where are we? I can't think of...
The one on where, yeah, you're gonna go from four to six.
They turned two into four.
Across from the nursing home.
Oh, yes, yes, yes.
So, this is, again, an A and R to show, the lines, you saw when you approved it, lines, but they were tweaking them a little bit, because they converted two of the singles to, so it's gonna be four, two families, instead of two of each.
Right.
So the lines are changing a little bit, this also has the easement lines for the circular driveway, the one-way loop that'll go on there, so...
Did it come in as you expected it?
Yes.
Ann made the motion, Bill seconded, all in favor?
Okay, that's it, that I have.
Move to adjourn.
John?
Second.
Second by hand.
Don't have to be hit by a truck.
All in favor?
So, Carolyn, what you're telling us is that this is our last...
No, it's...
The week's out.
Weeks, you have permits, and then maybe I'll have to... Yeah, and the one that... Oh, so you're gonna...
That's the last piece.
On the agenda. On the north...
All right.
On the boards, on the technical...
Dan?
Dan's the first one I had.
Thank you.